All right, Mr. Mayor, we are live and ready. We are just waiting on Harmony, but she's gonna be a couple of minutes late.
Okay, sounds good. You can hear me okay?
Yep, we got you loud and clear.
Okay, sounds good. We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. This is a meeting of the Soldavia City Council Tuesday, April 29th, 2025. Time is 5:07 PM, and this will be a work session with one topic for discussion tonight, and that is the FY26 draft budget. And we'll go ahead and let the city manager take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can you hear me?
Yep, got you loud and clear.
Okay, let me know if this, I'm using the same mic as last time, so if it gets garbly, let me know and I'll switch. I'm gonna share my screen here because our packets are not in color, and it makes it a little bit more difficult to see, so I'll share this. Hopefully, it makes it a little bit easier for everybody to read. This is the draft budget in more of a finalized form unless there's changes that come out from this evening. And we're gonna start on the first page here for the general fund. This is the first budget page of the actual budget, and that's gonna be page... Oh, it's just right in the beginning of your packet, I think maybe page three. When I go back to it, and then I'm gonna actually be reading off of page 46 are the notes of some of the changes that have happened as we scroll through on page, starting on page three. So whether you want to be on page three to see the budget in total or page 46 to see the notes, it's your choice, but I'll be scrolling through and reading off page 46 if that makes sense. So with that, for the FY26 budget, we have the proposed revenues, and we did utilize our projected revenues for FY26 versus our revenues, actual revenues from FY24. And you can see they're a little bit higher than what we projected for FY25, so, or for what we budgeted for FY25, sorry. We are exceeding that, and from our preliminary figures from the borough, we anticipate that we will exceed by just a very small percentage of the FY25 figures next year. But in the interest of being a little bit more conservative, we are still estimating that to be a little bit lower than today's projected figures. Our state revenue sharing, which is now called the Community Assistance Program, we talk about every year. And every year, we hear that we should not depend on this revenue, that there is a desire for the revenue to go away. We received this from the state of Alaska, and lo and behold, the letter that we received this year from DCRA said that we can expect $53,260, which is about $25,000 less than we actually received in FY24 and FY25. So that will be a decrease in revenue. Additionally, I have highlighted here, the highlights are kind of the things that I'm pulling out, but we can talk about any and all of it. Under charges for services and revenue, I noted in the FY24 and FY23 budget that they're split out a little bit differently than we, or sorry, audit, they're split out a little bit differently than we budget for with those long-term leases actually being appropriated to lease interest income versus rents and leases. So you'll just see that split out here, $35,000 for rents and leases instead of $47,900 from last year, and then $20,000, $21,000 for lease interest income. So it's just a different, it's just being appropriated differently in the audit for auditing, for our auditing standards. So I'm just trying to capture that here in this budget. I should have started in saying that in general, across the budget, there's a 2.9% cost of living allowance and a CPI increase for services, along with a 10% increase to general liability insurance and workers' compensation. That's per our insurance company, and a four and a half percent to healthcare insurance per our healthcare insurer. If we look at expenditures real quick, this is just gives you an overview of those departments that are impacting the general fund. So if you remember how our funds work, the general fund revenue is one pot of money. All of the, all the money for the general fund goes into this, this pot that's shown above for revenues, and then the expenditures are broken out by department. So those departments are admin, council, SPD, which stands for Soldavia Police Department, SVFD, which is fire, EMS. We had multi-purpose building, public works, and then we, and a few years ago when we moved to this budget, this narrative type of budget, there was also some shifts, and it made sense because it, when we are appropriating all of these expenses like software, audit, we're appropriating them across multiple accounts or multiple departments. And so at the time, administration with the support of council made the decision to take the services from this building, and instead of having them separated out by different departments, libraries, Soldavia Space, council, fire, EMS, SPD, they made an overall fund, a department for the multi-purpose building that was collecting all of the utilities, the insurance, and some of those additional software expenses, phone, were going into this, this department. But as we have worked through this budget process for the last several years, I'm in a discussion with our finance officer, and I believe I've heard actually from a council member or two about a request to have more of an actualization of our expenses, for instance, for the Soldavia space. I know the library has just recently asked, well, what are our expenses for the library? And SPD with our contract with APIA has asked multiple times, you know, for that, what is that? What is that expenditure that is being spent in that department that we're putting in in kind? So like Cindy said last night from the library, we put an in-kind match of about $13,000 a year that goes towards utilities for this building. So in that discussion, we were talking about doing a subclass for Soldavia space under the multi-purpose building, but it didn't make a lot of sense because then we have all of the services accounted for in our budget except for the library. And that's why I left this first column here for our figures, is that's actually FY21 where you can see we did have a library, a Soldavia space in the budget, but then they were removed out in FY22 and put into this multi-purpose building pot. So I am proposing that even though that was simplified a little bit, a little bit of the accounting for the finance officer, she's comfortable with it, we actually would like to have a better tracking system of those services and be able to provide those to our tenants and the people that we partner with in this building. So I'm proposing that we close the multi-purpose building department in FY26 and reestablish the library in Soldavia space. And so you'll see that the SPD, SPD, SVFD, and EMS, and even some of the council goes up a little bit, as well as the library in Soldavia space is now in there with about $12,000 each for the space, and the multi-purpose building is zeroed out. And that is just to be able to better track those services by the building. Are you guys following me? Any questions? Does that make sense? Okay.
Anyone's got a question, just either put your hand up or ask it, so.
If I may?
Yep, go ahead.
Yeah, I guess what I, I'm trying to understand how, it's always been a problem with the multipurpose room because utilities are shared. What can we actually divide out and separate out? That's always been our issue. But you've come up with a way to do that, or maybe clarify what specifically you're gonna be able to separate out?
Yes, yes. So I did allocate those out by square footage, well, an approximation of square footage. So if you have, you know, 100% of the building, then 10% of it is SPD, 10% is fire, 20% is EMS, because they have the additional training room. And they, even though the council and, or council and Soldavia Space share the space, they're using it for different purposes. So they each have 10%, library's 20%, and Soldavia Space is 10%. So pretty rough figures, but that's a, was a great way to just start in looking at utilization of the building broken out as a whole.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Peyton, I see you have a question?
Yes, sorry. I was also wondering about that. It would be pretty hard to determine how much each entity within the building is using, how the fuel is being used because of all the things that that entails in that building. I was wondering about water usage. I know the library itself wouldn't use that much, but like fire and EMS are obviously using substantially more when or if they go on a call. Some of those tenant spaces are using more than others, and when we're looking at possible funding or grants or anything like that for our fire and EMS department, if we're able to account for how much they're actually using, would that potentially help us in future? So when we're looking at adding meters to our systems, is that something that the city is able or willing to do to try and meter out the spaces? Like even maybe reasonably, you know, because you have cooking going on in the multipurpose room and stuff like that. I don't know. Is that being too nitpicky? I'm not sure.
Through the mayor, so I think that that could be of interest to see what the water usage is. We do not bill ourselves for water, so we don't have that charge in our budget as a utility. And for instance, you mentioned fuel that is going towards the boiler system, which heats the whole building. So that's why we appropriate that out because we don't, we also don't meter that. When that's how we, or we have those allocations in place, and that's how we do a lot of things that that are shared services or shared space as we have an allocation system to distribute those costs. But if there was a desire to meter the water and, and make a determination of water usage by space, that's certainly something we could look into in the future.
Right, so I'm just gonna come back to that. I'm not trying to nickel and dime or nitpick or over... Yeah, I don't know. I think nitpick is the only word for it. I'm just wondering, you know, like anytime there's a fire, anytime we're drawing down off of, out of the hydrants or anything like that, it's obviously a substantial bump, which in that case, you would be able to see that in your daily log. And I know that we're not charging ourselves for that service, but it is an expensive to this, it's expensive to the system. And when you're looking at funding going forward, is that, I mean, I'm just, I guess I'm just curious if it would not be worthwhile to consider in the future when we're looking at how many meters we would need or what we would need them for, if that's something that's worth considering. I know that the boiler system is a hefty thing. It's not, it would be no small feat to parcel that out. And we also don't want, again, nickel and dime our tenants. I'm not looking for that. I'm just wondering about in this, in this climate, you know, I feel like every, every leaf turned is a good leaf.
So through the mayor, I think those, you know, are all valid points, and that's certainly something we can discuss and look at as we move forward with that plan. I would also like to say that you pointed out fire hydrants, and I had an excellent discussion with our remote supervisor earlier this week regarding the cost of our system and regarding meters and, and just talking about, you know, where we're moving forward in the future potentially, or what those options look like. And he had an excellent point, and he said, you should be sharing with your public that there is a cost for being hooked up to the system, whether people are using it or not. They do the same thing in Homer, so that, that cost is there whether you're utilizing the system or not. And it's not just because the system has a cost and that it, we have to maintain and take care of it, and it's that ability that, to be able to come in and turn your faucet on when you want and use it, but also because it is there for fire suppression. And we do keep those, you know, fire hydrants primed and ready, and if there's a fire, whether you're here or not, you're gonna want that fire hydrant to go. So that cost, you know, that does, is part of the costs associated with the user fees for our water and our system. And I just, I hadn't looked at it that way, and I thought that that was an interesting way to look at it as, you know, fire suppression is one of those services that we can provide based on your, your utility rates.
Me again. Yeah, I've just been really trying to inform myself on this, this specific topic because I feel like it's something that we hear a lot about, and I was feeling a little underwhelmed in my knowledge of the system recently. I think the things have fallen out my ears with this fourth kid over the last year. But somebody did bring that up to me about how they used to be able to have, you know, the, the on-off fee at the beginning and end of season, and then only be charged when they were here, and that's something that I was discussing with them. They are a year-round individual now, and I encourage them to get on city council to attend our meetings and be a part of these discussions. It'd be really great if they did come and inform themselves. I think it's always good. But it does seem like there's a lot of disconnect with the public on that transition, even though I feel like it's been since before even I got on council or right, right around when I did get on council that those changes were made, and I think it's a good time now that we're in budget season to take some of this information and just put it into a blurb for the public in a quick digestible piece and just kind of like start making people aware of that cost and that need and that, and why we're doing that so that going forward as these considerations of meters become more realistic, it's not jarring. It's not very, you know, popular change never is, but at least if it's kind of in the back of their mind, why are we doing these things? It would be a good thing. Sorry to be redundant here. This is just something I've talked with a couple of different people about just in the last two weeks as people are returning or, you know, it's on their minds for some reason. I'm not sure, but those are my thoughts on that.
Hey, any other questions before I carry through?
I have a question. You might have lost me here. I thought we were discussing individual and the multi-service building here, identifying costs for the library, and ultimately, the city pays for the building here. It's a service to the public, okay? So I guess I'm trying to get my hands around what difference does it make if we have to pay if you're providing that library and you're the emergency services, and yet you're gonna still pay the bill for the, the building and the cost, the utilities and all that to identify each square foot of this and the user fee for it. That's something I'm not sure I understand what the importance of it is. Secondly, on the water meters, we talked about this early on. There's a minimum fee just to hook up, just like your light meter. It doesn't matter if you use electricity or not, you're still gonna have a monthly bill. But as you use beyond that, then it's charged. They have electronic monitoring in Anchorage, where it goes right directly to the office. There's no meter checkers or anything. So I guess one was the multi-purpose building that I was trying to get, figure out what we were trying to identify each as the library costs and why that makes a difference and have to sit and spend a lot of time identifying everybody's and like senior meals are in here as well, I believe. And so we still pay for that.
Through the mayor, excellent question. So that, it helps those programs, and it helps us if we're going for funding to say, we're spending this much on this service. APIA has asked for it before, the library's asked it for before. I know we've had questions about, well, how much is Soldavia space costing us? So it's just a better, it's a tracking measure to say, you know, this, this service is approximately spending this much. But yes, it is a taxpayer service and is something that we provide. Just in accounting, it helps us to know what those expenditures are going towards.
And, and again, the library, I think that's an important, as well as everything else, but I'd hate to see it not get funded.
Yeah. And this really helps them because when they go for fun, funding for, when they apply for grants, they can say, we, the city, you know, us through the city puts in $13,000 a year in match to help run this program. So it benefits them that way. Okay, and so if we're gonna keep going through, because we've got a little ways to go, I also wanted to highlight in here the total debt service for the road grader. We had this listed below. You can see it in a, in the like one, two, I don't know, sixth, seventh row up from the bottom, where it was put in the budget before, and we had it budgeted in the, in the public works to show that expense. But after going through again the FY23 and FY24 audit, it was noted that a better practice would be shown as an expenditure under the general fund. So here it is, you can see for FY23 audited, FY24 audited, and then FY26 budgeted that greater payment of $51,573. So just showing you some of those changes. I did update all of the notes in here, and you'll see the fund balance target for each fund is available. For instance, the general fund, two-month revenue target is $146,626. And while the F, while the 2026 estimated fund, funding balance does meet the fund balance target, just like the auditor said last night, we have these assigned funds that are payable to the general fund, and that's estimated at $588,711 at the end of FY26. You'll see them, they're in the light blue up here. So that's your MMRF, your fuel retail CIP fund that we started so that we can start a reserve fund for upcoming repairs for that space. The 2% sales tax, which is a committed fund through the voters for public works, the Soldavia Permanent Fund, police and public safety, which the council stood up this last year was as $50,000 in reserve there and the chance that we need to reestablish that department. And then the other assigned funds, which is like Lake Susan and vehicle replacement fund. So even though we are meeting our reserve amount of $146,626, we actually want to meet that plus our assigned fund total for a total of $735,337 at the end of our fund, at the end of our, at our ending fund balance in order to have a healthy fund. So we are making gains on that every year, and I would also like to point out as we go through here because there's not a lot of a net showing in here. And that's pretty typical in our budget for FY25. We had a net of $45,883 budgeted. However, we are, that's because we are asking big for any potential expenses that we could have trying to cover, make sure that we're covering everything across those departments. That's what, seven, eight, nine departments now. And then our revenues are projected a little bit lower in case there's some downfall. And then in the end, we do end up shaking out between $100,000 and $200,000 in the net. I think they're gonna be a little bit on the lower end for FY26 because the other thing we did was we reallocated some of the water and sewer costs back into the general fund to help alleviate some of that burden on water and sewer and to better accurately capture what staff is doing with their time. We're not necessarily so water and sewer heavy as it was previously appropriated. So we did that change. That'll, that's about another, you know, 20, 25,000 that's in the general fund this year. And then that loss of 25,000 from the cap funds. So, you know, potentially, we're looking at maybe netting 100, 150 if we stay on track with where we've been. But as a whole, this budget, I feel like does cover everything that we're, we're hoping to look for at this point in time without a lot of room, without a lot of leeway. And I tried looking every which way to cut some things down, and if you guys see things, let me know. We can work through that. But, but we are holding in the black right now with a balanced budget. And it looks like depending on what format this is in the formatting, got a little bit funky for these pages. I tried readjusting the PDF multiple times. So I'll, I'll do that before we have the introduction on the 12th. Harmony, did you have another question? Or comment? Okay. So I'm gonna keep going through then, and we'll just kind of more quickly go through our expenses for the general fund. That, those were our revenues and our overview of the general fund itself. And now we have our departments within the general fund. You'll see those changes highlighted in yellow are the more significant changes with the increase in employee wages and benefits, and that's coming away from water into admin, council, and public works. Audit, I just want to point out there that we did increase that budget. It's quite high, and that's something that is definitely on the back of our minds to help reduce those costs in the future. But most everything else stays the same for admin. This is the administrative department. I would say there's also a 3% increase in those wages for SOC employees, and that was at the discretion of the SIRS, the Soldavia Recreational Service Area Board. So nothing too outstanding here. Moving on to council, it's very similar. The wages has an increase due to that reallocation, and these are high. They're high purposefully because I didn't, I wanted to make sure that we didn't err, so we caution from the side. Contract services and leases is $15,000, and that is an additional $5,000 to cover the AML grant writing services. Equipment purchases is... Oh, and the contract services, I should also say, also includes improvements that we, that are needed for the multi-purpose buildings' fire alarm system, and you'll see that throughout the budget, that that's been allocated out across the services for this space. For equipment, there's $5,000. $5,000 has been appropriated, and that's for cybersecurity and equipment improvements. Utilities, before they didn't have a, I mean, they did in 2021, FY21, but in the last four years, they have the council did not have an appropriation for heating, fuel, and power, but since we are dissolving the multi-purpose building fund, those have gone back into council. And those are split across all the services in the building. Insurance goes up 10%. There's that audit is high again. And then the notes here also will follow pretty much most of what I've said and give you some more information. So when you guys have time, I recommend reading those. You can see our fun little graph of expenses. And I'm just gonna kind of quickly move through these. So if you guys see anything, shout it out. Police department, we put $800. Police department, we put eight hundred dollars in wages and salaries for repairs and maintenance from city staff. That living stipend of twelve thousand remains. Our contract services and leases has four hundred and ninety-eight, again, for the fire alarm system. Repairs and maintenance has three thousand, and that's for, um, upgrades to that building. I did hear from APIA that they have an interest of also helping, um, supply some material to up, update that office. Sounds like they're interested in putting, um, some flooring in. So we'll work with them and, and see if we can get that place updated just a little bit this year. Little more appealing for the public. Heating, fuel, again, and power, uh, has a, uh, an allocation that it didn't have before, or not at least since twenty, FY twenty-one. Um, and then the insurance has an increase. And those are because of that multipurpose building. So that's the police department. Fire stays pretty status quo with the exception of the cost for the updates to the fire alarm system and utilities and insurance. And you'll see that again as well for EMS. Stays pretty status quo. It does include that two and two-point-nine percent cola increase in both departments. That training is still there, um, for both departments. That's something that they are just now starting to utilize. They haven't fully utilized it in the past. So that thirty-five hundred for each department is there. Um, and they're, and they're starting to catch on that that's available and they're starting to use, see it be utilized um, as well as the membership incentives, uh, for three thousand. And then we have this contract services and leases for the fire alarm system, insurance. All of those showing that breakout from the multipurpose building. So here's our new Seldovia space. I wanted to show what we had budgeted in, in the FY twenty-one budget period, um, versus what we have budgeted for FY twenty-six. So that's, that compares something here. It is a little bit differently, is a little different because we do operate, um, a little bit differently since then, but like they didn't have insurance in FY twenty-one. And then we, we show the insurance in here, uh, to split evenly, well, to split and allocate across all of the services. Um, and then they have the four hundred and ninety-eight for the fire alarm system and the utilities, which they did have before. Library, same thing. So five hundred dollars, um, allocated in wages and salaries. And that's more like if we're doing things in the front area, like we just fix the stairs, if we have to fix wallpaper, bathrooms, um, some of those common areas, uh, library really does take care of their own space for the most part, um, which is great. Uh, but if we're, we're doing anything in the common areas, then we can, uh, appropriate that across those services. Uh, utilities are in there again, and insurance. And you'll see that. Public works is our big fund. A lot goes into public works. This is for our streets, buildings, um, a lot of vehicles. So parks and rack is now in public works. Uh, public works, uh, that just really does, uh, account for a lot of the services that we provide. You'll see again that increase, um, due to that reallocation and increased to employee benefits. I did leave training at zero, and I know that's something we discussed. We have training in water and sewer for employees, and that's where most of the time of, for training is spent. Um, I do think if we find some special operator training, we can absolutely appropriate some additional dollars. Um, and make sure that's accounted for. Those are pretty big ticket items, those trainings, and they cost a lot. So, um, I would look at an additional appropriation to be able to cover that. Remember last year's was supposed to be about twelve thousand and ended up being about ten thousand, um, for two employees, and it was well worth it. I'm glad we did it. But I know that, that, that's a, that's a really big ticket item to start sending, uh, our operators to any kind of operator training of that sort. But water and sewer is covered under water and sewer. Contract services and leases, uh, is up to account for annual pumping of our outhouses and our portables. We were able to do that last year, um, through SVT's service, and that's something that we're hoping to be able to continue. Um, so making sure to capture that in the budget. Repairs and maintenance does remain lower. Um, again, this is showing, if you'll, if you look at previous years repairs and maintenance, you look at twenty-twenty-three, sorry, twenty-twenty-four, when we really started, um, making sure that we were upkeeping all of those vehicles with the, we had those expenses. It also includes this fuel, which we did differently, um, in previous years. So now fuel goes directly to those vehicles. Um, which is why we some, see some shift in other accounts, uh, are lower, but the repairs and maintenance is a little bit higher. So that FY twenty-four, we had about a twenty-five thousand, seven hundred and seventy-three dollar expense for repairs and maintenance. Um, and that includes, like I said, those vehicles. Um, I feel pretty comfortable, will be about that for this year as well. And that really is taking into account new cutting edge, edges, um, oil changes, maintenance for every vehicle. Um, some of the, uh, any of that general maintenance that's needed. Um, we also have oil in this budget for the new grader. Um, requires the new oil and the, um, the DEF fluid. So that is incorporated in here. We are, have some leeway in the FY twenty-five budget. So I was just speaking with Johnny Gruber, and we're actually gonna go ahead and, um, because we haven't utilized what we've budgeted, um, to the full extent, and I, and I don't believe we will. Um, so we're gonna order a pallet, uh, of, or a fifty-five gallon drum of oil for some of the older vehicles that can take that, they take all the same kind of oil. And that, um, is estimated to last us about five years. So we'll go ahead and purchase that this year. Um, and then we have it in the budget next year for oil for the newer machine, uh, along with the fluids that it needs. Um, and in speaking with them, this is, seemed like a comfortable place for being able to continue to maintain that equipment, um, which we know is really important. And under equipment, we have let me make sure I a new power snake, and that's also a place where it's more, um, just a general unanticipated expenses that come up through the year that we need to purchase.
What page?
On page nineteen. Any questions on public works? So far, you'll see that insurance and liabilities up, audits up. And then, like I said, the road grader is, um, has been moved out. And that is now, um, being captured under the general fund, um, overview page. We're almost through our general fund. The last one here is this multipurpose building, and I wanted to keep it in here just so we have a record and track it that is zeroed out for the multipurpose building. It held steady for that FY twenty-two through FY twenty-five. But we, um, have allocated it out now across the services for this building. I'll pause there. If there's anything you guys have about the general fund before we move on to our special revenue funds?
Any questions, comments so far, anyone?
No? Okay. We're gonna move on to our special revenue funds. So we have six, uh, that we regularly budget for. There is a seventh additional one, and well, there's actually eight because there, they consider the grants, the state and federal grants, a special revenue fund, but we budget for those separately. So that's not included in this budget. Those are, and, um, with the, with the grant agreements and uh, the seventh is the fire department, which we audit, and they operate more independently. But that is something that I'd like to work with the fire department moving forward in the future, um, to have them approve a budget and then have that be incorporated into this budget so that we can show um, what those, those approved expenditures are, uh, and then have that, um, to align with our audits as we move forward. But it's, there's our, it's a non-major fund, so it, it doesn't ding us any to not have it in there. It just seems like that would be a good practice to, um, start. But we do budget for our senior meals revenue fund. Uh, again, this is a non-major. The only major funds that we have are the general fund, water and harbor. Everything else is non-major. Which means it's just audited a little bit differently, um, than they, um, than these major funds. So senior meals, um, this is showing best case scenario based on the competitive uh, application or the competitive, there, we're in a competitive period right now, um, for the state funding, and that's a three-year funding cycle. Um, we have filled out and submitted an application. Uh, this scenario is based on if we received what we asked for. Finance officer Jaeger is still working on scenarios if that's, if we receive, um, half or similar to what we've been receiving, uh, lately, or if we don't receive funding. Um, but we, she did not have that available for this evening. So we can bring that forward in a future discussion. Um, especially if that becomes an eventuality, um, it might be more prudent that we, uh, spend more time on that as it, as it gets closer and if we know what's gonna happen. Um, but for now, planning for best case scenario, receiving that funding as requested, uh, we do have the two-point-nine percent cola increase in here. We have the, um, portion of the fire alarm system repairs. Operating supplies and freight went up based on projected costs for this year. Heating, fuel and power is back in the budget. Um, and well, it's been in there, but it's gone up just a little bit. Uh, and then insurance is now in here. So that puts us at sixty-nine thousand, uh, about ten thousand additionally than we budgeted for this year. Uh, we do, I will point out also that we have a and so we're asking, before I point that out, for state of Alaska, we're asking for fifty thousand. Uh, and then we have an in-kind match of five thousand for that. And we're receiving eleven thousand, seven hundred and thirty-seven from the borough. We also received some donations for services, and we have seen a decline in that recently, just because we've had a change in population of who's using, not, uh, change of members who are using the services. And those are never, that's not a requirement, uh, to donate, it's just, uh, a request. So with that, you'll see on this next page here, page twenty-three, that we do have a ending fund balance. And that's something then with the finance officer that we've discussed, that, um, if it really gets bad, um, and the funding is just not available, uh, we can utilize this ending fund balance to help carry the program through, um, in, uh, some kind of a fashion or manner. Um, but we, it's really hard to know without knowing what kind of funding we'll receive. We do know we will receive the eleven thousand, um, the state matches the, by far the bigger part of our funding for this program. So it really just depends on what is gonna be available from the state.
I have a question, Heidi.
Yeah.
On the ending fund balance, is that expendable money that we have to use, or is that, okay?
Yeah, so those are considered assigned funds for that, uh, that fund. So that twelve thousand is usable for senior meals. And you'll see as we go through each of these, they all have an assigned fund balance at the end, uh, water for water, sewer for sewer. But yes, those are absolutely available for those departments or funds, I should say. So if we move on to page twenty-four, this is our water fund. Um, the decrease is, I'm anticipating is gonna be even smaller decrease in this. Um, and so it's a, any the larger decrease, I should say, for salaries and wages, but again, uh, budgeted high. And, and our worksheet that we've been working off has been budgeting high for a while, so it was hard to make that adjustment down, uh, and make sure that it was completely accurate for that decrease in allocation. So we left some room to shift. Um, but I'm anticipating that that will be a lower cost for the salaries and wages as we move through the year, and that means benefits as well. You'll see not a lot of yellow in these special revenue funds. They're kind of at their bottom line already of what those expenses are. Um, operating supplies are that twelve thousand, and you'll see if you look through, um, you know, for one, what, and things have shifted, so it's not a whole, a whole picture. But if you look under supplies, for instance, FY twenty-one is six thousand, FY twenty-two is thirteen thousand, FY, um, twenty-three is sixteen thousand, FY twenty-four back down to seven thousand. And that is because it, because we buy those supplies, um, we double. Typically, we have an off year where we only are buying one barrel of polymer, and then the next year we're buying two. Um, so we had, we bought more this year. I'm anticipating FY twenty-six, it'll be less. Um, but there's a lot of variables that go into those costs, the shipping costs, and then how much we're utilizing at the plant. So we do typically keep that around that twelve thousand number, um, because that's a pretty, um, middle number for those costs, uh, when, when it doubles. Contract services stays the same. We have that contract, uh, through Alaska laboratories, water laboratories in Anchorage, uh, for our water monitoring. Repairs and maintenance remains minor, and that tends to be about where we're at, is that two thousand a year. Equipment sense stays similar, utilities is similar. Uh, it's a little bit down from FY twenty-five, uh, because we've seen in FY twenty-four and FY twenty-five, a small decrease. We're hoping to keep it that way. FY twenty-three was a high year. Um, and that's, I believe that's when we had those really high fuel prices. So, um, again, there's shift there, but, um, we seem to be a little bit lower than what we keep budgeting. Insurance is that ten percent increase. Those professional services are for the audit and they go up, uh, postage freight goes up, um, because that's how, how it's trending. And, uh, dues and fees stay relatively same. I will say we did include capital projects, um, in here, and I, capital projects might not be the best place for these water treatment, replacement parts. Um, that's where it was budgeted in the last couple of years. Um, it could be that it, we move it under repairs and maintenance in the future, but it's a great way to track some of those additional costs um, of beyond what our, our more bottom line expenses are, uh, to update and maintain that plant. Uh, for this year FY twenty-six, that ten thousand, two hundred includes five hundred feet of chlorine tubing miscellaneous hose. We have to move a, um, we're moving a booster pump from where it is over closer to the intake pipe from the water storage tank, um, to alleviate an issue that we have where right now, if we drop below sixteen feet in that water storage tank, then we don't have enough pressure to have that water flow back into the plant. Um, and then that water goes, um, it goes through and helps us batch our, uh, coagulant to go back into the system. So, uh, moving the booster pump will help us, uh, be able to provide that pressure. That way we can utilize more of our water because all, all it would take was a fire or some kind of an emergency that needs water. Um, and within a couple hours, we would drop below sixteen feet. The fact that we can't is mind boggling, boggling to me, so without issues. So we're gonna move that booster pump. Um, we also have included in here two new butterfly valves, uh, CL, CL two, C one two, I'm sorry, I don't know the lingo. C L C L two, C one two, I'm sorry, I don't know the lingo for that measuring device. Uh spare C S D probe, that's kind of expensive. That's a big chunk of this, that's the three thousand. That's what went out this last year, um and we had all that months and months of issues. Um that really related right back to that probe, so having one of those on the shelves will hopefully help in the future. Uh. Help us not have such a long-going issue if this happens again. Uh jar toss setup and then sixty gallons of acrylic urethane sealer to reseal the water storage tank roof. So we're gonna attempt that in-house um with the sealer as recommended by our Alaska Rural Water Association uh representative. The water revenues are that two point nine percent increase. And we did not, uh if you see here, that. We did not include a transfer from the M M R F to cover that ten thousand. Which that's a pretty good place to be, because hopefully we can cover ten thousand dollars worth of parts a year if we need. Um and in this budget, we are, and the net effect is only nineteen hundred and one thousand nine hundred ninety-three dollars. Uh but it is in the black, and we're saying we're gonna be able to cover those uh parts. And replacements uh without having to draw from our reserve fund. Is there any questions on this, or is there anything else that council would like to see included, because we can do a transfer if we need? Um oh, I know you guys want to talk media and pump replacement. We will talk that about that in a little bit when we get to capital. Projects. There is an email in here from Jordan Cameron that discusses um how careful we need to be about this change. And that especially with the media, some of that media can last ten, twenty more years. Um and that it was recommended that we at least replace the anthracite, but we don't necessarily need to replace all of the media. Um as well as with the pumps, so we you'll see that letter in there, and we can talk about that a little bit more. Um but it's not in this budget at this point, and we will. We can start accounting for that in the capital budget um if if we need. And then ensuring that we're taking care of those needs in the future when the time comes, um but we. It's been cautioned that we have a really, we thought out plan before we move forward with that process. If there isn't anything on water. I'll move on to sewer. Wastewater, depending on what you want to call it. Wastewater kind of throws me off because water also has wastewater. So the sewer fund similar, we'll see a decrease in wages and benefits. Uh travel, training, operating supplies all remains pretty stagnant. Contract services, again, everything's kind of status quo. There's a small increase for fuel. And utilities has a a pretty decent increase because we saw a. Significant increase in power for FY twenty-five, so this might change, and this might have been a one-up. One time due to the lift stations is what I'm anticipating. Um but I wanted to capture it in case this ends up being a recurring issue, especially with both pumps now running on that new lift station. So that fifteen thousand is based on and to date uh expenditures for power for the sewer lift station. Insurance goes up to ten percent, audit fees goes up, and. Everything else remains pretty s- similar. Uh capital projects for sewer, uh we have not included anything. So I don't know if there's anything that's on your guys' mind um that needs to be budgeted in here, but at this point. With the lift station going, the dam uh safety inspection is happening before June thirty. Um we're not, we haven't. We don't have any big anticipated sewer expenses, other than the large projects, but um. For for the immediate for FY twenty-six. And again, that two point nine percent increase for services. No transfer for M M R F, and we are holding a net of uh one thousand six hundred and fifty-seven. You guys still with me?
Yep, we're here.
If this too, do I need, I can do it high level, more high level if you guys don't want the nitty gritty.
No, I think you're doing fine. I mean, this is typically what we're used to, so.
Okay.
Question, you're not going too small, so yeah, I mean, if it's uh, yep, no, I'm I'm fine with this.
Mayor Campbell, I have a question.
Yeah, John.
Um the other lift station down by the boardwalk.
Mm-hmm.
Are there two operating pumps down there or just one, and what's our situation there?
Excellent question. Yes, so that has been on our list to replace those. Um and we did have a state revolving fund for those. Um we haven't pursued it because of the lift station, other lift station errors, and because there was, you're right. You're bringing me back. There was, I think, like a thirteen thousand dollar cost to the city um for those pumps. That, because I think only seventy-five percent of that cost was being covered.
Just just wanting to play devil's advocate and be proactive about. Dealing with the issue, um however we decide to do that as a group.
Uh-huh.
Um I just. Yeah, I just want to be proactive. If we've got expenses spent on equipment and uh if we need something, and maybe. Maybe we need to talk about that.
Through the mayor, excellent, agreed.
Okay.
I will reach back out to D E C and make sure that funding is still available. And then we can see about putting that in this budget and proceeding and moving forward with getting those taken care of.
I knew there was something. I couldn't remember.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for bringing that up, John. Yeah, as soon as you said that, I recalled Heidi, we had had that conversation a while back about those pumps.
Yep, I'll make sure that funding is still there and get that ball rolling and and see what we can do with that. Excellent.
Yeah, the vendor that seemed to be willing to come down here and do it and, you know.
That's true. Okay, anything else on any of those? We'll move on to our last, I think we've got three left. So municipal dock uh is our trouble fund as usual. Uh we're budgeting for eighty-five stops, and that doesn't quite meet the bottom line from the ferry. Um so everything stays relatively same, except for no major maintenance and repair. You'll see in the middle of that page, that fourteen thousand three hundred and seven was spent out, and that was to do the slab replacement. Really glad that we got that done when we did, because we did receive back that inspection report for the dock. And it was noted that we had taken care of it, so it was nice to say that we had taken care of something um that we needed to. Uh but we, obviously, that dock needs a lot more attention and maintenance. And I'm working with AMHS right now to see what some of their preferences would be. And and. See how we can start working together to make sure that we are taking care of what we need to take care of. Um but for the meantime, I did not include any additional repairs and maintenance in here. I just, quite frankly, don't have have the quotes right now uh to know what it would cost to replace those ladders. Um I do know we should do some painting and some updates, but I I it it needs a little bit more work than I've had capacity to do at this point. Um but that is something we can bring back uh in the in the future as needed. Uh unless you guys have any immediate suggestions for the dock. Also, I said this is kind of our trouble fund, because you will see um in the budget. With those wages, which we budgeted high last year, um and it was too high. So brought those back down to reality, um charges for services were pretty even again with that eighty-six stops. Uh and we are in the red, and this is our one fund. But it just, it 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 depends too much on our stop, so I think it's eighty-five stops. We have budgeted ninety-six stops. We're in the black.
Great. Mayor Campbell?
Yeah, go ahead.
I got another one. So the crane is another issue. Um and my theory is, is that we lose the crane or something happens to it, and then the community doesn't have the crane. So, you know, I'd like, I'd like to see some type of annual inspection on that. I don't know when that crane has to be certified. And if there's money in the budget for that, I realize this is a difficult thing, but. Generally, those cranes require some type of annual budget or inspection, and. I know the last time I looked at it, there was some pretty rotten hydraulic hoses and stuff on it, and. Anyway, done.
Through the mayor, excellent feedback. Um I will look into addressing that.
Want something to happen, and then us be liable.
Yeah, I was looking at it after we had the incident on the dock. Um that might be another issue too, is having the gate closed at times that there's not permitted activity.
Go ahead, Jack. The gate closed.
Well, and so I was looking at the cranes, and I don't know if there's a liability there to the city. Because it doesn't look like they've been maintained as well as maybe they should be. But like you said, if a hose broke or something, you had a load on there or something, there might be some liability that we'd be looking at, and so. That would be the other thing.
Through the mayor, excellent suggestions. I will start looking into that.
I used to ex- I used to inspect a lot of cranes in the past, so that's kind of the thing, and. And then the other issue is the gate, and I don't know, you know. And the liability for the city, uh I just had heard comments in the community about. Maybe that gate ought to be closed. It is in most other communities. I have no idea whether it is or isn't. I just heard that in the community. So maybe that gate being closed might prevent something like that in the future. Um I I don't know what the general practice is of that.
Thank you for that feedback.
Yeah, if we, I just want to make one comment on that. If we do, you know, if we did move that direction, I'd want to make sure that. The the local fishermen that are typically, you know, sometimes those guys come in the middle of the night and have to do a quick turn or something. They're unloading materials, supplies, drums, whatever, that they'd build, you know, work something out with the city where there's a. You know, shared combo or something like that for your your known regulars, Heidi, that that utilize the the crane in the in the dock, so. Something to avoid phone calls in the middle of the night.
I bet.
Agreed.
Yep, Mr. Mayor, I agree with that full-heartedly, um because for years fishermen have come in the middle of the night whenever. So to have some, you're gonna have to have, they're gonna have to have, whoever uses the crane can have to ac- have access to it, whether it's a combination lock or what. But um as long as we predict they're being able to get in for usage, um it's a good conversation. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I think you could treat it more like a state airport where we have code key boxes like at Homer. That people would know what the code is to open the gate, and that'd probably solve the problem.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
And through the mayor, and I don't, I don't know that that would be actually that expensive, if we if we did some kind of a chain with a combo lock, so we could look into that.
I, yeah, I just got one other comment about that combo box. I know that. The last six years, I've had a vehicle parked there in the locked lot at Smokey Bay. And they had a lot of trouble with their combo box, but the current combination box they have there. I think is a relatively inexpensive approach, and it works flawlessly. So um if I'm over there next, uh if you'd like to have a picture of that, or maybe. But I'm just saying it works really well, and I would definitely support. There are certain people that need to be able to use that. I get that. I'm just looking at the liability for people being out there all, you know. Unauthorized people.
Okay, thank you guys for that feedback. Uh we will look at implementing some kind of system out there for that. That's our dock. Move on to our harbor. Harbor sees that increase for wages and salaries and benefits. Travel and training remains ra- relatively the same. That's pretty typical every year. Supplies and uh are relatively the same, along with uh contract services. Is a little bit higher, and that is to include that jacklawn annual lease. Um so that does hit harbor, and it's about twelve hundred a year. And uh hazmat barge is typically what we see in those contract services and leases. Uh outside labor is typically the fire inspector, fire extinguisher inspections, repairs and maintenance. Uh it's a little bit higher due to some of the repairs that we want to do um this year. Though most of that does fall under capital for the port fee. Equipment purchases remains relatively the same, um and utilities. Like I said, there's not a lot of movement in these funds. They kind of are are staying um. At the minimum uh with a little bit of wiggle room as as they need some upkeep uh in maintenance, which is not a bad place to be. You will see in here under harbor repair and maintenance for capital projects, we have twenty-one thousand budgeted. Um and that is for five additional finger hinge pins. Uh replacement of seven electric pedestals. Those are coming in at about just a thousand dollars a pedestal plus shipping. So we have about eight thousand in there for those pedestals. And and then improvements to the bottom of the harbor building siding, so it's got some weak spots there that are. Are starting to poke through, so getting some of that taken care of. Port fee also covers some of the uh wages for our maintenance um worker. And for toilet paper and other general uh necessities needed for people that are coming through and utilizing that infrastructure. And you'll see for revenues, we did a um. A two point nine percent increase except for. Uh annuals and dailies, because those are, especially the dailies are one of the highest places in the state. So we did leave those the same as where she is, net the harbor is netting about fifty thousand a year, so we do have a little bit of wiggle room in that. As long as we stay relatively sa- relatively same, um you will see there's a kind of a difference in. Um our charges for services versus other, and that's because we implemented that new square system. And so the square, so the charges for services and everything that's broken out are the things that the city is billing out. Uh and then the cu- credit card revenue is what the harbor bills out. And that's, so that's for their daily walk-ins or monthly or anything that she's charging. So that credit card revenue um reflects. Those charges that she's taking in. And uh we're showing again a a positive balance of three thousand one hundred and thirty-five dollars. We had a net effect showing last year of nine hundred and seventy-two, but if you remi- remember the finance report last night, we we are about that fifty thousand. Range um similar to the last two years, so. Staying staying right about that um. And then we do show jacklawn in here. At that audited balance of one uh hundred and thirty-seven, two hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. Um and there is an interest on jacklawn, but we'll talk about that a little bit more, because there was this. Additional pot of money um that's been audited for many, many years um that relates back to the deferred maintenance. Um and so during the FY twenty-four audit, that deferred, that interest on the deferred revenue was applied. Um by the auditors to that. Pot of money, um and so that's something that if council wants to change or move around, or just just depending on how we utilize that, those um. The revenues, we can make those changes, so letting it sit for right now until we have that discussion. revenues, we can make those changes. So letting it sit for right now until we have that discussion. And we'll go on to our last special revenue fund, boat haul out and storage. And again, this is not a lot of uh, highlights. It stays pretty relatively the same, two point nine percent COLA increase for wages and salary. Uh, the one thing we did add is five thousand under capital projects and that is could either be four new uh, electric pedestals or as we were talking to a local uh, electrician, it could just be that we need to update and revamp some of the pedestals that we already have there. So it seemed like that was a safe way to start is budgeting five thousand and whether that's upgrading the current system or adding to that system. Um, it's an initial start to start making those improvements in that area. And again, a decent place to be because we're not pulling that out of the MMRF or any of our reserves. The fund is actually covering that with its user fees. Um, and still showing a positive net effect of four thousand six hundred and forty seven dollars. It's not a, not a bad place for that fund to be.
Hey, Heidi, I have a question.
Yes.
Are that electrical? I mean, obviously unless it's obvious, then you know, if Leila or someone from public works sees it. But would it be possible to take and get a, a quote to just get an inspection on to have an electrician go and take a look at, you know, just a quick look at, at all that infrastructure and see, give us a write-up of what he, you know, visually can see uh, for a day's work, you know, go through everything and just, yeah. Then you'll have an idea too of what, what kind of road ahead you're looking at for, you know, whether it's repairs or whether, you know, those, those pedestals can't even be repaired. Uh, or they're, you know, recommended for, for full replacement. I guess you would have to write up of scope of what you're looking for. Um, get a quote for the inspection, have the inspection performed. Then I think that'd give you a pretty good roadmap.
We are already on it.
Okay. Perfect.
So that's why we've got that five thousand in there is to help um, go one direction or the other. But yes, we are already in the process of, of having somebody look at that.
Okay, great.
Okay, if there isn't anything else, that is uh, the general budget in a nutshell. We do have one additional page and that is our reserve accounts. Um, and then this is going to lead into some discussion about, well, we kind of covered most of the capital uh, projects that are already in um, the budget. Uh, but we can talk about if there's anything additionally you guys want in there. And then of course, uh, implementing those sewer pumps. So we'll look at that and then um, the uh, crane maintenance for uh, the dock. But if you're looking at your reserves, this gives you a kind of a good picture of what we have um, going on in general. And I apologize, those total, I'm looking at, I need to um, update the, the total on the M L revenue because that's not correct. Um, it should be closer to that five ninety six from FY twenty four. Uh, I did want to point out in the yellow is that for FY twenty five or is the movement that we did have for capital projects. Uh, water had that uh, an allocation of, I can't remember the exact amount, but that fifty seven thousand minus forty two thousand uh, for the pumps and replacements that happened. Uh, the sensors and replacements that happened at the water treatment plant, uh, as well as that dam inspection that's happening this year. Sewers and similar had um, some expenses, uh, that for almost four thousand um, was for the pedestals for the lift station. Uh, dock had the uh, slab repair. And BHO, so there's not left, left in dock and BHO had uh, the trailer repair. And those slabs for the BHO approaches um, all appropriated already uh, through budget amendments or in the budget for FY twenty five. Uh, I also highlighted in FY twenty five uh, that two percent sales tax. Um, just in case that's something that the council did want to look at for a project moving forward. And then I wanted to highlight in FY twenty six uh, that we do have an unassigned balance in our MMRF from interest that's accumulated um, and over time. As well as there was an extra um, find that exact amount. There was an extra twenty two thousand two hundred and eighty three dollars that was appropriated to that account and in FY twenty two. Uh, and then additional transfers of one thousand dollars from water and wastewater that go into that, that ended up in the unassigned portion of the MMRF. We also have, as I mentioned, that uh, harbor CIP uh, that was noted in the audit. It's been in the audit since previous, uh, since prior to two thousand seventeen. And it's just been sitting and it's a sixty six thousand six hundred and forty seven is what it was for FY twenty four. That uh, interest was added to it. Um, and, and, and that's what made it that sixty six. So every year it's getting a little bit of interest. Uh, following a similar interest pattern, we can be potentially looking at maybe about seventy four thousand six hundred and forty seven dollars. Um, at the end of FY twenty six. I did want to point this out to you because in discussing with the audit team and looking back through previous audits. Um, and working through what this figure is as uh, it's believed that this money is from the deferred maintenance that was provided to the city for the jacklawn bay dock in two thousand eight upon that ownership transfer. Since that time, um, well, not since the beginning of the time, but in the last decade, management started uh, depreciating some of that cost for the maintenance of that dock. And then, and uh, our previous administrator's tenure, uh, she actualized uh, through the budget with council, the Jack Loaf Bay defart dock deferred revenue fund. Um, it was set up as its own account and that's where we ended up with that about a hundred and forty thousand. Um, and put, put on its own, but that sixty six thousand is been, so it's been um, it's been depreciated, right? It's come off the dock, but it hasn't come off the books. If that makes sense. This is what the, the, the rest of it that hasn't come off the books, even though we could say going back through since two thousand eight, all of those uh, amounts that were depreciated in the audit plus the sixty six thousand accounts for the total of the expenses that the city has had for utilization of that dock. So really, what I'm trying to say is that sixty six thousand could be appropriated towards the general fund because the general fund has been carrying that um, that dock since that time. Um, and I want to double check that. It actually might be the harbor. Either the general fund or the dock, uh, the harbor. And I think you're right. It's the harbor. So it could be more of a general harbor expense. Um, or of, of, of revenue. Um, but it is here. It is a, an account that the city has had for many, many years that is available um, for utilization that, that uh, that uh, spans back to that deferred account. You guys following me? Yeah.
So is that money earmarked then for jacklawn bay are gonna be directed wherever appropriate?
It, it's not earmarked for jacklawn. So it's, it's uh, it is directed as a harbor CIP fund, but not specific to jacklawn. So if you think that the harbor's been covering jacklawn's expenses. So technically it's a payback. So technically it belongs back to that harbor. So when we think about bigger harbor projects and what that looks like, um, that money, um, it could, it could be used either way. Um, at council's discretion, but I wanted to call it out in this budget. And that way, moving forward, it's accounted for in here that it is available for.
Does that have to stay in the CIP or could it move up into the MMRF for the dock?
So that's a great question.
Or harbor, excuse me. Yeah.
Yeah. So that's a great question and that is something that I spoke with uh, LG Rayfield about this year in that um, it would be great, I think, as an, as administrator to see us be to see us putting money into the MMRF and then utilizing it more regularly to make sure that we are taking care of our um, repairs and maintenance. Uh, and so that's why at last night's meeting, she mentioned that they did consider the MMRF committed. Prior to this FY twenty four audit, it was just an assigned fund that council could make whatever decision they wanted to with it. You still can as a committed fund, but it calls it out and makes it a little bit more restricted because it is in your guys' code that you will have an MMRF. And so that was a part of the discussion that we had is at least calling it out as a committed fund and then now working through if that becomes its own, like a special revenue account or what that looks like. So that you guys can inject um, like ending fund balances. You could transfer over into it per fund if you want. Um, and that's something we can look at for this year. Uh, certainly that thirty thousand from the reimbursement from the water uh, inventory, water line inventory. I think would be a great place to put into the water MMRF. Um, and I, and I think you're spot on with that, Mr. Mayor of we can put that sixty six thousand into the harbor MMRF and I can, I want to look at the code. I, I did read it uh, recently a couple of times, that MMRF uh, ordinance. Um, and it does account for capital improvements in it. But in speaking with the finance officer, we were talking about, you know, we really want to make sure that that's clear for future generations that it's for improvements and major maintenance and repair um, as uh, as the council and the city moves forward um, in order to ta- take care of the needs that you guys have. Um, sorry, that was a really long way to say, yes, I think it could.
Yeah, and for, and what brought that up, I remember a couple of years ago and we probably still have some issues when we, I mean, we couldn't at one point even, you know, quickly respond to, you know, a couple of those fingers that were sinking, you know? It'd be really nice knowing, you know, we had a number of folks that were visitors, you know, come, you know, complaining to harbor master, hey, I can't tie my boat up here, you know, this thing's sinking or whatever the case is. Yeah, stuff like that. I mean, if we had to pull ten or fifteen grand to fix two or three or four of those or whatever, I'd like to be able to do that if we had money there, you know? Cause we're just, we're just foregoing mortgage at that, at that point.
Let's do it. Let's move it up.
Don't get in trouble with the auditors and I.
I got, I got one, I only have one issue with it. Jeremiah, and I agree with that, you know, at some point we should be paying the small boat harbor back for the expenses from Jack Love. I don't, I don't really have an issue. But I have a concern and it's really more to the matching funds that we're obligated to, to the grants. And so that being said, I realize that this money's not for that. But I guess I would be interested to hear what our manager's plan is to come up with that and, and you know, could we use it on a short term as a loan to help us and then pay it back? I don't know. I just, that's my only hesitation. Is the matching money that we may need to come up with um, in the next, in the time we implement these grants.
To finish the jacklawn dock, you're saying, to get over that.
Jacklawn dock and then she had one last night. I'm drawing a blank on, we had to have some matching funds, I think for the roof, wasn't it? And so that's my only concern. Otherwise I'm on board with you guys.
Through the mayor, so um, that is an excellent point and it could be that it sits here for another year. Our committed funds for Jack Loaf Bay dock are a hundred and forty thousand, which we have just about in that deferred revenue account. However, um, you know, we don't know if there's going to be unanticipated expenses and I'm assuming that even after the dock is built and finished, um, there could be a, a need for an injection of revenue um, until we are able to start, start, yeah, start seeing revenue. Um, so it could be that that's a, a conversation for the future and for right now, it just sits under harbor CIP to see if we end up needing it or not. Um, or you know, i- if harbor has any maintenance needs coming up as well. If it's not been covered.
Right. I do agree with the mayor and the fact that, because I've heard the same complaints. It's really embarrassing when we have somebody who wants to tie up a really nice boat and the doctor trying to tie it up to the woods are rotten that it won't hold the cleat or you know, they gotta get out of their boat and step in the water. You know, I mean, I, I, I get it. I just have some concerns with the matching funds of all the stuff we got going on.
Yes. Um, and so speaking of matching funds, if there's more about harbor, we can talk about that. Otherwise we can move in to the discussion about um, that matching fund for the roof if you guys want um, to have that discussion. If there aren't any further questions or thoughts on our um, reserve accounts as presented right now.
I, I don't have, I'm just, uh, uh, when I ask if it was earmarked, if that can be directed to pedestals in a boat storage yards or crane repair or anything of that nature. I don't know if you'd.
Not necessarily that pot of money. I mean, you could, but I don't think that would be a best practice. But under your dock, you do still have five thousand seven hundred and sixty six. Um, and under BHO, you still have twenty six thousand four hundred. Um, and those, those funds, I'm sorry, nope, I got those wrong. Um, BHO, you have seventy thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars that could be utilized uh, to do some more of those maintenance and repairs. So there is, there are funds there if needed. So if we want to talk fuel station, uh, that's kind of the elephant in the room. I did include an updated uh, version of the FY twenty six budget capital project considerations that was presented on April eighth. That's on page fifty of your packet. Uh, and again, for those that have a printed packet, I'm sorry that the highlights didn't come through. You can see some of the projects that were completed in FY twenty four and FY twenty five, though that's not an exhaustive list. Uh, and then some of the upcoming work uh, within FY twenty five or FY twenty six that already has funding or it has a plan to be completed. Uh, for instance, that boat haul out, large trailer is, was completed. Uh, road resurfacing is ongoing. We have the material, uh, BHO slab. Uh, we just need to get those in the ground. Uh, jacklawn is in the works. You can see that a hundred and forty thousand there is the cost for the city. Um, that's committed at this time. We did receive an additional four hundred and something thousand from Denali Commission uh, as a non-federal matching grant. I'm trying to work through that paperwork with them right now. So that will hopefully help keep that project whole. Raw water transmission line, we keep hearing that that funding will be released any day. Uh, but haven't received it yet. And we have funding both through the EPA and through the FY twenty five state legislative grant. Which is also where that road surfacing funding came from. Sewer lift station is complete, all except for uh, we need an American iron and steel certified, got a chain, either stainless steel or galvanized uh, to complete that project. So we're still shopping around, looking for that. That's been.
Are you sharing screen or is Liz running that? Who's running that?
Oh, sorry. I am not sharing my screen. I am sharing, but I'm not moving.
There you go. Slide that to page fifty real quick.
Yeah. So, um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So here you can see, um, as we discuss these things, where you were continuing to working on ditching and culvert replacement. We do have a couple of grants for culvert and inlet work through Aqua that you'll, oops. Oh, why did I go backwards? That you'll see us move through um, in the next couple of years, in the next year and a half, I should say. And then um, city yard cleanup, we're still have plans for that. Harbor improvements are being taken care of um, through the port fee to the extent that they are. And that's new toilets in the women's bathroom, new bulletin board and water line to efloat for the remaining of FY twenty. And that's new toilets in the women's bathroom, new bulletin board and water line to e float for the remaining of F Y twenty five. And then what we discussed for F Y twenty six is a little bit later on. We have the thermal envelope improvements for the city office happenings. That was the new garage door. We have a R F P right out now for new insulation and then we're supposed to be able to do new man doors, new windows and new thermostats and heat registers. Cemetery, we know we need a new set of blades and oil and an oil change for the lawnmower and that will come out of public works. And for considerations for F Y twenty six, the green is what's been put in the budget already. Yellow, there's some considerations and red, we'll talk about a little bit further. So we did put three thousand in the budget for cybersecurity improvements, twenty one thousand in those harbor improvements for the F Y twenty six. That's those electric pedestals, the finger hinge pins and the spot, the siding for the bottom of the harbor building. The ones not highlighted are in the C I P, but they don't have funding at this time. So no funding for the historic boardwalk. We are going to look at doing some minor repairs, hopefully this summer or fall regardless, because it's in need of it. And I'm gonna skip over Sodobio fuel and the roof for the moment and come back to it because I think that'll be the bigger conversation. I did want to make sure we call out the upper dam since we are having that dam inspection here in the next month or so. And we did have a cost estimate from the job or from the grant for Fish Creek. When we were looking at that, we received a cost estimate of about one point five million for the repairs needed to the dam. And of course, we're not anywhere near that. So that is something that we should start seeking funding for here in the near future. It was noted into the two thousand sixteen inspection, it was noted in the twenty twenty two inspection. Yes, the upper dam. Yep. So it's something that's just continue, keep, we keep kicking it down the road. But at some point in time, we do need to address those improvements that have been noted in those inspections. As I mentioned, we did put the one thousand one hundred and twenty dollars in the budget underwater for sixty gallons of acrylic urethane filler for the water storage tank roof. And I know we've discussed water meters and I wanted to just mention that I've had some, I mentioned it last night, but I know the mayor missed that discussion. And so I'll just, since we're here, reiterate it that I did have a really great conversation with Talkeena a utility. They are a very similar size to us, about two hundred and twenty customers. She thought that she had some meters potentially on the shelf and that other communities might as well. So we did reach out to some other communities and, and we think we have a pretty good lead on at least ten loner meters that we could borrow indefinitely at this point and implement and start taking some readings this year. The one issue that I'm having with, and I'm trying to figure that out, and the utility I was talking to is going to get back to me with some suggestions they had is that the, those do need to be read regularly. And so there is a possibility that some of them might have the capability of having like a hard wire that can be wired outside of the, to out, the outside of the building and then we could go by and read them manually on the outside of the building as well as I was gonna, most of these are Badger meters. So I was gonna read out, reach out to Badger and see, because they, they do it at a, they do it by unit, kind of a unit price to see what it would take to buy the software and be able to do remote readings for just a few units. Maybe they would have a break for us. I'm not sure. That's definitely a piece we need to work out. But I do think that we are going in the right track and we will be able to get some of those meters implemented in the community within the year at little cost to the city. I'll let you know if there are additional costs sneak up or what that reading, that pro, that software for reading those meters ends up looking like. But even if we're doing it, reading them manually, we'll, we'll, we'll have to work out those specifics. So it's in green because it's not necessarily in the budget, but it is in the works. I will say, and I found this really interesting because I know the council has talked about wanting to subsidize or support water and sewer. Talkeena has two hundred and twenty one services. Most of them are commercial, not most of them, but half of them are commercial. They have a million dollar budget. They put three percent of their sales tax towards water and sewer. They have a three percent sales tax just for water and sewer. I know we're not in a position to do that, but I do think that shifting some of that burden away from water and sewer back into that general fund was probably a smart move. And looking at maybe if there is some kind of a dedicated revenue stream that we could put towards water sewer in the future would be beneficial. Their water and sewer user fees weren't even half of what their whole budget is. So if you think about that, the majority of their water and sewer was based on sales tax. And that was, they were able to justify that because they are a big tourist community and they see a huge influx of tourism on that really impacts their system. Oh, I, I bet they do see more people than we do.
I, I got a question for you, Mayor. When it comes to just these samplings of these meters. I mean, I don't think it's really necessary that we have to have them all electronically read. I mean, I don't know what your thoughts are and what the council's is, but my thoughts is when I first bought that building over there, there was no access to the shut off short of crawling under the crawl space fifty feet and turning the main line off. I've since installed it in a utility closet. So it'd be real simple to put a meter over there and at least for the testing phase, it would be real simple for me to take a picture of it and send it to you. So I'm just wondering, I, I think though during the, I think though during the process of this, we need to find out what meters are available and what suits us, our needs best. You know, so that technology I think would still need to be reviewed, but maybe just not implemented initially.
I guess my, my thoughts, John, there's a couple, couple of thoughts to that, two pieces to that. One is, yeah, certainly for the initial usage phase of that, yeah, a hundred dollar Badger meter on Amazon works all day long, right? As long as it's N S F and the whole bit, that's not a problem for, you know, a number of us to, to agree to sign up in the pilot program. I mean, I would want a good sampling of, of businesses, houses, et cetera. So that's the piece of just getting general usage and information because basically all of our arguments and discussions are all one hundred percent speculative at this point until we actually, the city can actually get some numbers. And then the second piece of that would be more of an official pilot program to test the whatever metering system that the city wants to use.
I see what you're saying.
Yeah. So two, two pieces to, to that, definitely. I wouldn't want to make a massive, you know, and I still don't think it's going to be a huge investment, but I think the, the reading piece of that will be the most complicated. And again, if you've got ten or fifteen to on the pilot program and figure out, you know, yeah, is it an honor system? Is it people, you know, sending in a photo? Is it, you know, a quarterly reading? I, I don't know how that works, but that's, that's something we're going to have to develop. And then as part of that, we're going to have to come up with a completely different fee schedule, right? What it means, what you're, like Jax keeps saying too, you've got these minimums for everything that we've discussed. And then, then you've got a usage fee on top of that. So every month, you know, you're going to pay X amount of dollars. And if you have your summertime as busier as businesses, we all know we're going to pay more. That's what it is. But we know when we're dead and there's nothing going on in the winter, we're probably going to be pretty darn close to that, to that minimum number, whatever that, that established rate is. That, that's in my mind. Heidi, I, you can chime in there as well if you're, your thoughts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No, I think you guys are spot on, both of you. And I think we are headed in that direction. It's just not, it's not going to happen overnight. And I do think we can start the process with little to no cost to the city because it does sound like there are meters out there that are available. And, and we'll just have to work out how that works with the pilot program. And then moving forward, and that was something the D C R A recommended when they were here, as well as Talkeena recommended. They said D C R A really did help them establish what those rates and, and user fees were moving forward for those meters. So I think there's support out there for that. We're not there and I, and I don't anticipate we'll be there in F Y twenty six. Potentially, maybe we're talking about it in F Y twenty seven or F Y twenty eight. The other thing is it is a pretty big investment to start. And so it was recommended not only by Talkeena, but Arwa and from Homer. That if that's something that we are looking into doing, that we do seek funding because it can get a little dicey if you're expecting the city employees to be crawling into people's crawl spaces and under their homes and closets to install these systems. So it seems like it's more of a best practice if you can hire somebody to at least do the initial installation and, and then work from there on the, on the fee schedule with D C R A. So it, it does seem like there's, there's potential and I, I think that we will, we'll start getting some figures here later on this year. Does that sound good?
Yep. Sounds good to me.
Okay.
And the mayor, I think, too.
So water treatment plant parts, we already talked about that, the hose. Hoses that are in there, butterfly valves, measuring device. I forgot to take scada enhancements off of here. We already implemented that this year because that was, it wasn't even two hundred dollars. So that was something we were able to get up and running. I did leave in red what water treatment plant media and water treatment plant pump replacement. I do not want to lose track of these. I, we are working through with Arwa what this would look like. They've helped some other communities. I do have a letter in the packet from Mr. Cameron and we've had, since then, we've had some additional conversation about what that cost for that anthracite would be. But you'll see on this letter, he does talk about it being wise to replace that anthracite. We do already, it sounds like have a pallet of it. I need to check on that. And then, and making sure that we replace the anthracite for all of the filters and that. Let me see here, I'm just reading through real quick. I believe it stated in here that the pumps and that actually might have been a different conversation, that the pumps can last twenty plus years. And that that's something that it would be great. Okay, okay. He does start talking about it, that they're at the top, that they're pretty robust units. That we could have some shaft seals and a bearing set on hand as well as the V F D and panel switches. You know, so having some parts, but overall, and then making sure we're lubricating those motors. But overall, and a different conversation we're having, some of those pumps can last a really long time. And then as well as you can see later on down, they said the filters, they've seen last twenty years on the original media. So it sounds like they're finding that these things are lasting longer than initially anticipated. But having that anthracite on hand would be helpful as long, as well as some of those backup parts, which we are working on. And we'll, next time him or Todd are in town, we can work through and go through our stock as well and make sure that we are noting any other additional parts that we want to order and having that on the list to move through. So I guess, long story short, to say, it's not, we're not in a scary situation yet. And even if we were, we do have that money in major maintenance repair, as well as we have money in our ending fund balance that we can cover a full media replacement if we need to in the immediate, in the immediate future. But planning to at least replace that anthracite and then having those parts would be a really great practice moving forward initially. And then making sure that we are inspecting that equipment and, and regularly taking note of, of the condition so that when we do have to do updates in the future, we can make that happen. But we do, we do have that M M R F money and in the ending fund balance for that at this time. Any thoughts or questions on that?
Yeah, just a quick comment. I, yeah, timing was perfect on that letter from Jordan because I actually was talking to the engineer, Stephen Hebness, who was, who was the work for C R W when we built the water treatment plant and he now has his own consulting firm, Spike Fork LLC. But I asked him the same exact question and he confirmed that exact same thing that Jordan came back with. That, yeah, typically only the anthracite layer, you know, early in the game. Typically what happens is you'll lose because that anthracite floats and it's really small. So you'll typically lose that in your backwash over time. And then, so that, that's why that's the, it's the smallest of the grains. So that's why it typically needs to be. And it's the very, very top layer. That's why it needs to be replaced more, more often. So. Yeah. And then Jack had made that comment too. And I think John, both way back when we were talking about this is let's not just arbitrarily plan on, on changing this out because they say to change it out. Let's, let's check to see, right? At the end of the day, it's just a bunch of rocks down there. You know, sand and carbon filtering our water. So, yeah, so that's, that's good to find out. This will probably be less than we thought and last a lot longer than we thought. So that's, that's good news all the way around. Nevertheless, still need to plan on, on changing out that, that anthracite when the, when the time comes.
I just have one comment. I'm thrilled to hear that. You know what I mean? Jeremiah, that's a good thing. But I do have one comment in regards to the inventory. Bearings and stuff like that are, as long as they're in the, in a proper environment where they can't rust on the shelf is probably a good thing. But it's been my experience that seals don't generally hold up sitting year after year on the shelf. So, you know, if they're not an expensive item, maybe, you know, we could plan to rotate kits even if we end up throwing them out, you know, we still have a set. But, you know, I found with inventory in the past, I don't know what Jeremiah thinks, but you got seals and stuff, they dry up and they're no good. So, you know, as long as the parts are readily available, I think is a more, is a bigger concern. You know, is it a, still a pump that they're using in the market? Can we still get the stuff? So some of that stuff may not be as critical to have as long as the parts are available.
That's correct. Most of the, any of your seals in aviation, they have a shelf life expiration date on it. And so if you have a program where it's bagged and tagged and monitoring it, and that's what we have to do. So.
Okay. Thank you, guys. Yeah, I think that we, and we do have an inventory list going right now. So we will keep updating that and look at what we, what we do or do not need based on availability and, and make sure that we're following a tag out system if needed. It may be if most of these things are readily available, that we just know that we have the budget and if we need to get them, we can. Otherwise, if there are things that we need to have on the shelf, we can, we can pursue that.
Hard parts are one thing, but the other, like Jack says, could be rotated.
Okay. If there isn't anything else on that, for the rest of the capital projects, we did include five thousand in the B H O. And you'll see that in green here for either for pedestals or some electric update. It sounds like maybe the pedestals might not be the way we need to go, but we can update that system. And three thousand in there for the Sodobio Police Department improvements. So those green are in there. And if there are other projects you guys would like to see, let me know. But at this time, I will move, and I did also include, just so we have a record of it, you know, that heavy equipment storage complex, the price for just the building, the dock improvements. We know A M H S has noted a twelve point eight million dollar need for that dock. And through the mayor, again, I did mention last night that I provided a public comment at the Amhob meeting on Friday and received confirmation back that they have received. uh, and received uh, confirmation back that they have received our public comment. They know that we have a willingness uh, to work with them for those dock improvements and parking improvements. Uh, and that has been sent on to their engineering department. And so we should be able to hear a word back from them and and start that process of what that looks like moving forward. Uh, but just noting it in here because we do have that figure from them, as well as that block street sewer, um, which was a priority of the council both this year and last year. So those items are on here. They're just not in any, they're not highlighted because they don't have a lot of movement right now. And then I'll move back up to, as promised, that Salvia Fuel and Lube Roof Replacement Project. So went through the paperwork today. Uh, that CDBG grant is for two hundred and fourteen thousand, five hundred and fifty seven dollars. Uh, we did uh, commit in that grant application to a forty, so it's not as fast as I thought. But it's a forty-two thousand, four hundred and ninety-three dollar cash match, as well as a thirty-eight thousand, um, thirty-five dollar in-kind match. That's, you know, pe- pe- people, storage, uh, or I should say city employees, storage, um, things that, equipment, things that the city is putting into that job, administration. Um, all would all come out of that in-kind for that project. Uh, so there have been some discussions about maybe doing a new building instead. Uh, I know that council member Barbara has mentioned that um, to me. And I'm, well, I'm happy to go back to CDBG and see if there's a way that they would work on that with us, especially if maybe we can find some additional funds. I know we did have this as a request to the state and to the federal government. I don't think that that's gonna, um, I haven't heard it, that that's making any headway. Uh, so there are not a lot of other pots of money available. Potentially, we could ask the USDA. Um, certainly, we can look at other options if we want to look at exploring having a whole building instead of just the roof. Uh, for this project, this uh, funding does cover the roof and new purlings in that building. Um, if council doesn't want to accept this funding, that's always an option. Um, but we do have that forty-two thousand, four hundred and ninety-three match. And I would like to take us back to that reserve page. I think that was what, thirty-five? Ooh, no, not quite. Um, because if you look at, all right, I'm gonna make you guys dizzy online. If you look at page thirty-nine, um, for that match, I do, there are some options. Uh, if you're looking at forty-two thousand, uh, we do have the unassigned MMRF. That's completely applicable for this project. That's the hundred and fifteen thousand, ninety-one dollars and sixty-nine cents. Um, I did highlight the CIP, the Harper CIP, though I don't know that would be as appropriate. Um, and then there is the police reserve. If you guys didn't want to hold that fund anymore, though, that's new and it seems like that might be um, something worth holding on to uh, for the future and in the eventuality, or i- if if there was an eventuality where the city wanted to reestablish the police department. Um, or there is also the two percent sales tax, which right now um, we have sitting and holding for the grader. I would like to say that I also received back uh, from NC Machinery. Or I should say Finance Officer Yeager did, as she looked into this for me. Um, that if we paid off the grader early, and this was as of last month, so it'll probably have changed um, at this point in time. But last month, we would have saved about twenty-six thousand dollars.
Well, there is a saving.
A sa- a small savings, about twenty-six thousand. Um, and it wouldn't impact our warranty, is what we've been told. So we did sign a, uh, pay a, a ten thousand dollar cost in our base cost for the machine for a seven-year warranty, or um, what was it, three thousand miles? Uh, we have it in here somewhere. Yeah, we're here, seven years or three thousand hours. Um, warranty that it shouldn't impact. So uh, that's an option in December. If we keep trending the way we are, we should have the funds to be able to pay it off. Um, and then um, we wouldn't have any, like, that would pretty much take us down to zero. And we would start over, um, but we would save that twenty-six or twenty-five, however, it it'll probably change by December, but somewhere in there, twenty thousand dollars. Um, but for the roof, uh, you could utilize the unassigned funds would probably be the easiest. Um, or if you didn't want to pay off the grader and you wanted to just uh, have that money sit as we pay annually, um, you could utilize some of those funds. Or, like I said, we could, we could move some other things around. There are options. So looking at this, I would like to hear back from council, what your guys' thoughts are. I know um, I know there are some thoughts about potentially changing the way that's done and I can go back and explore that. Um, but if you have any thoughts in the meantime, um, if we were to pursue this project, I would love to hear them.
What, what kind of money to pay off the grader? How much would you have to?
Let me go to that page. So that is page.
And over how much time would it?
Forty-one in the packet and we have uh, two hundred and five thousand, nine hundred and seventy-four dollars remaining. Uh, we
How much remaining?
Two hundred and five thousand, nine hundred and seventy-four.
And you're gonna save twenty-something by paying that three hundred and something?
Yeah, la- as, as of last month, if we would have paid it off, we would have saved twenty-six. But that, that, that
For how much time that, that if you carry that three hundred, how many, how many? How much time would you, you have on normal payments?
We still have four payments left.
Four payments. And are those quarterly payments or annual payments?
Annual.
So four years. So you're getting that money, twenty thousand, you're getting three hundred and something for twenty-some thousand dollars, basically. If I understand it right.
We got, we'll have a little over two hundred, little over two hundred left, uh, left on it.
Yeah, I don't know if you can borrow money at that interest rate. It seems like it's pretty reasonable.
It is.
Yeah, you know, it may be better not to, to, for that twenty grand to keep that three hundred or two hundred and something for other projects that we, because you can't borrow money at the rate that you're talking at, if your numbers are right.
Mayor Campbell?
Yeah, go ahead.
I wouldn't be in favor. I don't think it'd pan the grader off. I'd just soon keep the money. And then I have no issue with the match funds for the roof. Um, you know, coming out of the unassigned maintenance and repair fund. I just have, and it maybe it's um, you know, prices have changed so much from the time I used to work on crews building these buildings, but the building packages used to be a re- you know, a really affordable way to go and you know, you've got here for your heavy equipment storage, a hundred and thirty-five thousand for building only. You know what I mean? I just wonder, and I'm not, I don't want to hold this off a long time, but I just wonder what it would look like to build a new building over the top of that and then phase in the concrete and and the other stuff to finish it, and how many hundreds of thousands we would be out versus this two hundred and, we're gonna put, we got a grant for two fourteen and a match cash for forty. So we're right there, that's two hundred and fifty-six thousand. And in-kind, uh, we got another thirty-eight. So we're, we're pushing three hundred thousand. And that building needs more work than that, siding and electrical upgrades and all kinds of other stuff. So I, I don't know. Um, I guess depending on what we could find out, I would be okay with the match funds coming out of that unassigned fund. And then the money from the harbor, what do we call that? We called it a
CIP.
CIP, yeah. That, you know, I think we kind of owe it to the dock fund. And I think Jeremiah would probably agree with this. We probably owe it to the dock fund. Because they've been going the expense of Jack Loaf for quite a while, right?
The harbor, the harbor.
Harbor, yeah, I'm sorry. Um, you know, I, I'm just wondering, you know, if we move that over there and then just sit on it until we come up with a priority list. You know, what we need to do and what the priorities would be. I'm, I'm thrilled to see that the plan to do little parts of maintenance along the line with the budget. I mean, I, I think it's a, it's a great plan. You know, so I, I just would like to see, you know, get, I'd like to see us get some for that sixty-six thousand, you know, that's, that's gonna really benefit our community.
So one thing, and of course, we're not anywhere near there yet, but uh, if there are funds available for the harbor, for harbor maintenance in the future, um, there are some t- uh, funding programs through the state that does require fifty percent match. And I don't know that we'll ever get anywhere near there, but potentially, those funds could be used um, to do some engineering and to go out for additional funding in order to do a, a, a match and have a, a big project to replace uh, that, to replace some of those floats. Originally, uh, when that harbor had maintenance, the last set of improvements was done in what, two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen um, timeframe? And it was set up as a, a three or four-phase project. And they only encom- encom- completed the first phase, maybe two phases. I'd have to look back at the paperwork. I'm not great at working memory with, when it comes to the exact details, but um, they completed at least a phase. It might have been two. But there are a couple of phases still just sitting out there that were recommended improvements that we could work towards in the future as a, a larger project.
Isn't there millions of dollars worth of?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Oh, yeah. But I'm saying this could be seed money for, you know, some engineering to, to go out for those grants. Maybe some, you know, we have some grant writing funding right now available. Um, maybe not this year, but in the future, if it's available and it's there um, waiting for that purpose, that's something that could be looked at.
Yeah, so it comes to the, I'm sorry, when it comes to the building and the roof, I just don't want to miss the boat. You know, I don't want to get down the road four years and put a whole bunch of money in that old building and then wish we'd had at least looked.
Yeah.
To at least come up with some kind of
So through the mayor, uh, the other thing that is included in that CDBG is for some engineering. So it could be, I mean, we can go back out to CDBG and see if they would uh, amend the scope and look at a whole building instead of the roof. Um, and then what we could also do, depending on their answers, um, when we do that engineering, maybe we ask for both. What is it to just replace that roof? And what is it to do a whole building and get some professional assistance back with that?
I'd, I'd really be interested to hear what the, the others think of that. Um, I just, I just have real heartburn with that building. And, and not, and the only other one kind of that I feel the same way about is the building you're in. Because it's kind of, it's a steel building too, and it's right down there on the waterfront and anyway.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yeah, go ahead, Vivian.
Yeah, um, excuse me. Um, as far as the building goes, it's wonderful we got the money for it, but the, my question was just what came up just now. Which, who was engine, who was looked at the roof? Who's made the determination of what needs to be done? Is there some, did Dylan, Dylan and Dylan come in and give you an idea? Has anybody from the professional construction view come in and given us an idea of what it needs?
Through the mayor, yes. Uh, Dylan and Dylan did help me with the cost estimates and they looked at it with me. Um, as well as there was a time where Mayor Campbell uh, and, and myself and uh, Mr. Dylan looked at it. Uh, so we have had some assistance, but that's why engineering was included, um, because it, because uh, it would be who of us to have a more finalized plan as part of this project, which is included in the project.
Right. So, yeah, I would, I would be in favor of the hesitance of going through with just doing the roof right now is tenuous. It's wonderful we got the money, but the idea that you had as far as um, going back to the organization, ask if, if the, the grant could allow a new building possibly gets an engineering and actually get a good professional opinion, what our options really are, if we can hold on to that money long enough. Um, is, I'm not sure if there's a timeframe of accepting it uh, or turning it back if we choose not to use it. Do you know that?
Through the mayor, yes, our acceptance is by October. So we need that by October or else we lose it.
Okay, okay. Yeah, so again, I would say that we investigate your concept that you came up with Heidi. And um, and see what our options are in the long run. It is an old building, uh, but you know, would a Band-Aid do the job? Or, and we also have to consider the people that are in the businesses in there. How they would be, how they would work it, if we built a building around them. But yeah, that's all I have. Thank you.
I'd like to make a comment. Um, I purchased a hanger here from Gable Steel and doing that, I requested a quote for a building, a new building for the fuel and lube. And it was somewhere around a hundred and twenty. If we use a grant money and it needs to be US manufactured, you could add about thirty-five percent. Um, and still, that still comes in considerably under two hundred thousand. That'd be FOB Seattle. And I've checked with Olympic, R and M Steel, Gable Steel, one other company out of Texas, and Gable Steel has given us the best price so far.
Yeah, I'll weigh in real quick. Um, so, yeah, I mean, at the end of the day, I mean, I, I don't have a, I mean, yeah. Obviously, it'd be great to put a new building there. The problem is, yeah, the, the building, the, the primary frame, the skin and the roof is the cheapest part of the entire operation. Moving them out, finishing the building, the concrete, the flooring, the mechanical, electrical, all that. You're gonna have a million bucks all day long into that building, no question. I mean, that'd be on the cheap side of, of everything. Um, yeah, I guess it makes sense to go back to CDBG if they can get you a quick answer. If there, we, if there's any interest in a, in a whole new building, um, the bottom line is though, if we were to, if we could, if we accepted the money, we got quotes and it was forty-two thou-, you know, let's just call it forty-three thousand bucks cash out of the city's pocket. And we were able to get engineering, a new roof design, update, upgraded purlings and a new roof on there. Um, at the end of the day, that's gonna be the cheapest for the city, period. Anything else is gonna cost a lot of money and a lot of time. My comment to that is that we definitely owe it to our tenants, regardless, based on our lease, our lease parameters and conditions that yeah, they can't have rain coming inside of their building. So we gotta figure out, there's a short term and there's a long term. In the short term, we gotta figure out something this summer, while it's warm and dry, to get that roof to stop leaking. So, um, and we don't have to solve it all tonight, but yeah, I think there's two things here because I don't know if we could get engineering and then we could probably still get it done. If we got an answer and got rolling and wanted to get that roof this year before hard freeze up in winter, we could probably still get it done if we got rolling here. Um, and I don't know how fast CBD uh, G can get us the funds. Um, you know, to, to actually get rolling. So do you have any idea on that? Uh, Heidi, how long that takes to get the money actually rolling, once we commit to the match?
So if I remember correctly, when we did, did, did a CGB for this building, it was slow on the city's part. But once we um, worked through, once we engaged with them, they were pretty quick. And they're actually really quick on reimbursements. It was a pretty fast process once we engaged. Uh, so I, I do feel like there's potential that we could have that done um, this summer or fall, maybe more likely the fall uh, for that project. Uh, if that's the direction that we went. And maybe this is the short-term fix and we look into some of those upgrades as a, as a as a whole, moving forward. I'm not sure. I will go back to CDBG and see if they um, are open to changing that scope. I, I do think y- you have some truth in what you said, Mr. Mayor, that uh, if we are going for a bigger project, even if it's costing just a little bit more, that matches more. So, um, this probably is the most feasible and quickest option at the time, at least to get a roof on there. But we can, we can look and see what CDBG says. And then even if we're accepting the awards and we have engineer go through and they can look at a couple of options. Then, you know, we can do what we can within the guidelines and then look at the rest for the future. I'm, I'm not sure. I just, I think there are, that there are ways to approach this, but this is probably the quickest one, as said, and cheapest at this time.
Yeah, my only, my only concern is that, yeah, I mean, this, so this hasn't even hit the radar. I mean, capital improvement project, the new building hasn't even hit the radar on our plan. It's always been roof replacement, right? And I get it. If we want to do a new building, I'm, I'm not opposed to that. But first of all, we need to even talk to our tenants to see, Josh had indicated at the last meeting that they were indicated, they were, they would like to expand, you know, into the shop. Now, I don't know if that means expand retail, if that means expand restaurant, what that means. But yeah, there, there, you need, in my mind, need to be a little more of a process than just quickly buying a, you know, a pre-engineered metal building and, and rolling. So I'd want to see at least a, a little long-term idea of what's happening because I still think the space across the street that we have that's unoccupied would be a way better build out for their type of, of business. But that's, that's just me.
And through the mayor, they did indicate, yes, that they would like to expand that restaurant side out. And I would say, and I would, just as a reminder that in the lease, any of those kinds of improvements are their responsibility. So the structure is the city's responsibility. But anything that they're doing internally, they even the electric, we had that included in the CIP as just a boon if we're making the project whole and insulation. But those aren't requirements. That's not a necessity for the city to implement those. Any build outs that they are doing internally, as said, or improvements is on that lease holder. So the roof, the purlings, the siding, those are our responsibility. But anything that they do internally will have to come out of their budget.
Got you. Yep. No, sounds, sounds good. Heidi or Harmony, you got your hand up?
Uh, yeah, sorry. Probably could have gone ahead and just put my hand back down again, but this is like a reminder, the fuel loop, aside from a retail and a small coffee shop. I don't think it would be cheaper to move fuel lines across the road. I, you know, as far as the rest of this goes, I still feel like there might be a bit of a conflict of interest. But just, you know.
No, I, I'm not saying moving any, anything, no, no fuel lines across the road. All the fuel infrastructure would, would have to, would remain.
Okay, okay. Well, then that was my.
Space in general would be, if we, if we talked to them would be, would make way more sense over there if they were gonna do, do something like, like that. And yeah, it would have to be a, some sort of, you know, shared shared deal going forward if they wanted to, you know, invest in something like that and have a, a new build out versus, you know, continue to work, you know, work in a hundred year old building. So.
Sure. Yeah. I mean, that's all reasonable. Everything else, yeah, my only thought was moved up on just moving across the road.
Yeah, no, no, all the, that infrastructure. Yeah, you're right. That would, that would get expensive, very expensive.
Mayor Campbell?
Yep, go ahead, John.
I'm certainly not advocating that we go down the rabbit hole. You know what I mean? I just kind of wanted to get an idea and, you know, I think your comments are probably valid when it comes to building out a new building and, and the expenses of what it'd cost to build it. And Jeremiah would know that currently more than I would. I'm not in that business. But I also think he's also right in the fact that time is of the essence with this project, especially the way things are going with our government. You know, and if, if we want to get a roof on that place, we probably should get one on it before the summer's over here. I don't like it, but it doesn't mean I can't chew on it.
Yeah, I think the first step, I agree with you guys. I think the first step is, you know, Heidi, if you can go back to them and just ask, you know, maybe you can quickly, within a week or 10 days, get a, a response. Maybe it's quicker, you know, on what it would be if we, if we did express interest in a new building, what that process looks like, if they'd be interested in something like that. You know, as, as part of this and then at least give us some, couple of options to, to consider.
Can do, Mr. Mayor. Okay. Well, with that, Mr. Mayor, so that was the budget presentation. The input I received back, besides looking back in, on the particulars of that grant is to look into the funding for the sewer pumps for the outside, or sorry, for the slew sewer lift station, some crane maintenance, getting a lock for that gate. And it sounds like everything else is.
One, one real quick, and is there another lift station somewhere else?
Yes, we have the two. So that's what you're talking about.
That's it, two. Yeah, no third.
No third one, just the two. So I will get some updates on that and put those into the budget. And if you guys are comfortable, we can skip holding a work session next week. With the addition of those numbers, we'll introduce the budget on the 12th. And then hold that public hearing on, what was it? May, the day after Labor Day. So it's a Tuesday. It's weird. And May twenty seventh for budget adoption. Does that work for you guys?
That works.
Okay. And then I'll get you guys some answers on the CDBG as we start working through that process. And we'll, I mean, this is, this is the budget and it'll be set, but as we saw in the last year, we need to make appropriations throughout the year. We can. And of course, it's always at council's discretion to make those adjustments or recommendations from the city manager. So I think this is a, I hope you guys feel good about this. I think it's a decent start. And we're still able to take care of some of those needs and, and hopefully we can alleviate some of that burden from water and sewer. And start working on maybe some, some projects that need to be worked on. So, or continue to work on projects that need to work on. So thank you, council.
Good. Thank you, Heidi. Appreciate all your guys' effort, the whole team there to, yeah, budget. Budget time is never, never fun. And I know it's a, a many months process to get where you're at. So I appreciate, appreciate your guys' efforts. Do we have anyone in either, I don't see anybody in chambers, but any, any public online that wishes to comment on the FY twenty six draft budget?
I'm not seeing any, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, sounds good. Any final comments, questions from anyone on council? Okay. Well, thank you, everyone. With that, then we will go ahead and adjourn and thank you, everyone, for your input.
Good night.
Yeah, you guys have a good night.
Thank you.